Still no time. Okay, Tim's on, ladies and gentlemen. If there's no objections, I'd like to call the order meeting of the REO committee. I want to thank everybody for their presence and attendance and we'll try to be efficient in utilizing your time today. I have. If there's no objections, I'd like to move the public portion to the end. And but I and at this point, I'd just like to ask for a motion to accept the minutes from the March twenty third, twenty twenty one minute meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Our motion has been made in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There was a suggestion by one of the members of the committee to have a discussion on the potential meetings with general contractors. Would somebody like to speak on that particular question or thought?
Yeah, that was me that had brought that up. So you know, it's been brought up before, but we, I don't know if we really ever came to an outcome. You know, up at UMass Amherst, we do have the general contractors. They do attend every meeting. It's it's every other month up there. So again, I'm not saying we have to have them every meeting, but we should have general contractors there. So if you have any questions or concerns or you know, we're able to give them feedback instantly and really get, you know, really get them involved into why it's important because they can hear and see us and talk to us and all that at the meeting itself. So I really think at some point, we should really look at having general contractors come to these meetings. It's it's a half an hour, forty five minutes at a time. It shouldn't kill them at that point.
Tim?
Um, it seems like a good idea. It's um, we don't have any direct contact with them. Hope and and Shay. They have most of the contact, I guess, at least with the job sites and stuff. So I I like to know their opinion, but I think Fiori is right. We don't have any contact with them. So it would be good to to try it out with one, maybe the you know, one of those two big projects, one that's finishing and one that's starting. It's a good idea.
Lindsay?
I agree. You know, I I agree with what everyone said. I think that that's a fine idea.
Hope, is that a, it would be appropriate or is it to, I believe that as he said, not necessarily to to perhaps make an invitation for the next meeting to at least have one of them come to give us an update from their perspective, either the one just recently completed and probably or the one who is doing it just to hear from down there as to what might be some of the obstacles or difficulties as they try to implement this ordinance.
Um, yeah, I mean, I can certainly extend an invitation out to O'Connell and Sons, which is the Brightwood Lincoln Project. I I don't think that ground has broken, so to speak, on the DeBerry Homer project as yet. But I think probably the next meeting, I don't see any reason why O'Connell couldn't produce a representative. I assume it would be Frank Amore's. And I may have mispronounced his last name, so I apologize. But he's been sort of our contact with O'Connell Sons with the G C. So I I assume we'll still be meeting via Zoom. So I I wouldn't think it would be a major inconvenience to have him on the meeting.
Um, Melvin, on one other point of that is that's exactly, besides having him come to the meeting as the pro the the meeting, excuse me, the project progressed, but was at the very end, we would have a closeout meeting with them and they would actually discuss what their problems were, where they found it difficult. And everybody could learn and the other G Cs kind of heard what was going on so that they could keep an eye out for that on their projects as they move forward. So you know, we'd kind of call it this closeout report from a general contractor on the numbers as well as what their hurdles and what the upside and downsides were on that project. So again, I just think it's a good idea and I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you.
Well, perhaps what we should suggest through Hope, of course, is the invitation be extended to both the new and the old at the next meeting and that be the primary agenda item. I mean, we can also discuss something else if need be. But the invitation should be exactly that purpose to find out what the difficulties were for the other one and for the as a courtesy and a benefit to the ongoing one to be able to hear what some of the hurdles were. Does that sound appropriate to everyone?
Yeah.
Lindsay?
That sounds great.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Hope, would that, would you be gracious enough to extend that invitation to those individuals? Explaining to them, we expect them to be here. They should need to have them no more than a half an hour. We'll be very conscious of their time.
Yeah, and I'll I'll get their email contacts to Maureen so she can send them the the link for the meeting and such and the agenda and so forth.
And I would respectfully ask that the members of the committee come prepared with their questions and comments being conscious of these people's time and we don't want to be wasteful, but at the same time, we want to make sure that it's a meeting. Nobody ever wants to show up and feel like they're not getting something accomplished. So thank you. On, hold on a second. The next thing I have is that a discussion of potential efforts to enhance minority contractors' participation. That I can personally update you guys on the fact that President Marcus Williams and myself about three weeks ago, maybe a little longer, met with Mayor Sarno concerning the possibility of CDBG money being used to hire somebody specifically as a conduit to the minority contractors to try to broaden their opportunities and to work directly with them on qualification bonding and some of the other personal, I mean, particular obstacles for their expanded participation in contract acquisition. And he was very receptive of it and I believe that they are doing and going to move forward with trying to figure out what that might look like and what type of funding might necessarily be in place. I know that they're the Association of Black Business Professionals are working directly with contractors and the person that we had had in the past, Jennifer Little Greer, Matt Owen, is is their candidate for that position. I know Greg Elbe, I believe I brought up State Street over the weekend. I see that there is a Minority Contractors Association that is now open and has an office operating on State Street in Springfield next to the former offices of State Representative Ben Swan. I don't know exact, I believe that they are. I I don't know enough about their operation and the setup to be able to speak on it, but it is an agenda item. If anybody would like to speak on this, other than what I've been able to share to this point, I appreciate that at this point.
My, I I might have been the one who put that on there. I I was, I'm glad to hear you and and Marcus went to meet the mayor. I just wanted the the point of my comment on it was just to keep, we had a little momentum there with that a couple of months ago when we had that group from Hartford and the, I forget their name, Association of Black Business Professionals, but then there was a a group from Hartford that does this stuff. I thought we had a little momentum and the spirit of my comment was just to keep the momentum going, you know, to get a concrete next step. That sounds like that was a good concrete next step. But you know, do we know if they've set up a chapter and and you know, that sort of thing? And I don't, I not heard anything really except what you just said.
I can speak to that, Counselor. I'm sorry. I can speak to that. So where we're at, the the organization that you're talking about was the same woman that Counselor Edwards just said that was that Jennifer Little Greer. Yeah. She is a candidate for doing this. The problem is we can't just give one person a contract. So we are working with Tim Sheen's department to develop an RFP of sorts to go out and see which of these organizations would be most advantageous to the city to kind of set up shop and work in partnership with procurement, Community Echo Dev and probably Hope and Shay to see what what can be done to increase general workforce participation and kind of training up the workforce that we have out there now. So that is being looked at. I think it's going to happen in FY twenty two, but I don't know specifics of funding or not. I know CBDG was floated, but I'm not sure if that was decided or not.
Well, that's great to hear that, Theo. Do you anticipate that I won't say a certain next step, but a possible next step is the issuance of an RFP to have people apply for it?
Yeah, once funding is, you know, earmarked and once they figure out, they being the people who have the purse strings, figure out what pool of money it's going to come from, how much is available, then an RFP will be released. Again, I I'm not sure if it's going to be this fiscal year or next fiscal year.
Yeah, right.
That might. That's great. Glad to hear that.
Okay. Is there any more comments on that particular issue? Uh, I believe the next agenda item was the discussion of the best practices for the Brightwood Lincoln Project.
Um, so Edwards, can I say something about what we just talked about?
Oh, please.
So I don't know, I'm just hearing you talk. I know this has been brought up a couple of times that I've heard recently, just what you talked about potentially getting training or education out to the Springfield owned businesses or minority owned businesses about how they can get work with the city. So I'm glad people are talking about this because I also think that this is one of the responsibilities of the REO and I don't know if anyone is aware of any nonprofits that already try to do this work or work like this that potentially could come in and meet with us and we could talk about maybe them reaching out to the community that are already involved with to try to help as well.
Well, I know that what I what I hear or what I believe is going on is that you have competing interests in the community now where they are actively recruiting contractors, as I says, as in the Association of Black Business Professionals. They they are nonprofit. Matter of fact, I believe they're just giving out some scholarships, so not scholarships, but some grants for small businesses development. If it's not announced, it will be very shortly. They're giving out like, I think nine or ten, five thousand dollar grants that they receive that they're working on. And then you have Greg Elbe's organization. I think that they're, what they're doing is working, reaching out to through their networks, recruiting contractors to be a part of their different organizations. Then I don't, from that point, I'm not exactly what the scope of it is. I know that when Jennifer Greer works with from what I understand, she, her program is she works with the contractor. They reach out, she gives them access to office space and she actually works with them to explain what the process is to qualify to get bonds and she works more like a as a teacher. I can't speak for the other association. But in both cases, they've been out to us and perhaps maybe it would be beneficial for them or for, well, we we've heard a little bit about hers as well. But maybe I should reach out to maybe Greg's program and see if invite them to come to a meeting and explain in detail what they already do. And I mean, if if they're working as a nonprofit, maybe the partnership is not necessarily the need for hiring of somebody specifically to work with the city, but just me and a marriage between us and a private group. Now, in the past, we've had over the many years, I know at one time the lady that runs the old window company, for example, she used to, I think that might be back before Hope was even here. But it, there's been several iterations of groups that have come who had a training program. I remember going to stick on on the on the entrepreneur side of stick for a graduation of people. They had a program, they were funded to train people in construction trades. They used to attend meetings or they did attend a few meetings until they stopped. And I'm, and I know, like I said, the old window company, she was training women in the construction trades. So the thing is, is this is, in theory, it's not a new concept. Nothing ever gets off the ground to the extent where it's long, has longevity. We always end up having conversations about the same thing, pretty much what's, you know, that we know the bonding, the access to the things, information of procurement and process. It seems like we always end up spinning the wheel and then every once in a while, we come back to the same thing over and over again. And at the same time, I hear a lot of criticism about, you know, contractors not being able to know what's going on, but you know, just to be frank and honest, it's like the white contractors seem to find the journals and they seem to find the information. At a certain point, you know, I'm not trying to be and then we, I'm trying to be careful how I say it, but if it's if it's public information, then why is it that, I mean, why doesn't everybody have access to it if it wants it? And for me personally, just because people keep saying it and they keep repeating the same thing, doesn't make it accurately true. I know for the Gemini site, you've got thirty three housing, you know, thirty three units of housing being put up with public money. I sent copies or a notice of that out to at least seven different people I know that are involved in the construction trade. And I don't believe that not one minority applied for it. Now, why I can't get into. But it's kind of like, you know, almost to the thing where you know, you know, you you can lead the horse to the water, but you can't make them drink. If there's an, if there's a reason why they don't qualify, it's the reason why they can't qualify, then you know, let's let's deal with that. But to this point, I don't have a reason for it, that that's the lack of participation. And like I said, with the public journals that are out there that publicize these things, you know, why why don't they get it? And then we solve that problem, we thought, because Theo has been actually sending out procurement bids to the city council so that we could personally simulate that information. I don't see an uptick in in interest because we, you know, are sending them out to our network. So I I really don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that, you know, there's roadblocks from both perspectives, either whether it be Springfield owned businesses trying to get work or residents trying to get work, right? And then at the same token, from the general contractor side. So what are the, what are the roadblocks from those folks getting the work? And then from the general contractor side, what are the roadblocks for them not being able to get the residents or minorities or women or veterans that the REO is asking them to get? So you're right. I think that it's kind of like we talked about the same thing kind of cyclically, but I think that it may be the more information we can get out there, the better. And that's why I thought maybe not just us or the city doing the work, but also in addition to that, us bringing in those nonprofits or programs that are interested in this, having them come talk to us and then them, since they already have kind of relationships in place with the communities, they can do it too.
Well, I mean, there's there's certain entities, like I know down on Main Street, there's a group that gets funded to train people in computer skills and they've been, you know, I can't speak to how, you know, successful that they've been, but I know every once in a while, probably once a year, they're out actively recruiting people to come through their program. I would imagine that, you know, it shouldn't be that hard for, you know, to get people, but apparently I apologize, but for some reason that it in fact is. Sorry, I apologize. And that's the thing is, is I I guess what we're really good at is getting examples and descriptions of what the problem is and what we're lacking is solutions. I hope, did you want to add something or throw something out there?
Well, I just wanted to ask if by chance you had, because I think you said that you had provided information to minority owned businesses in Springfield about the Gemini project and that none applied for that, for that project. Did you by chance follow up and ask why they didn't?
I've heard from a couple of people, but not in concrete. And and no, I that's something I guess I, that's on me. I can do that. And follow up with some of them and to ask why the problem is or what the problem is with them. But you know, the thing is, what I get most of the time is the criticism of, well, the city doesn't do enough and we can't get a job, we can't do this, we can't do that. And then if I have any frustration is is that when I make suggestions, you know, because it's not even about just the construction, I get complaints about certain ethnic groups not, you know, getting more jobs than other people because they're bilingual. Well, when I say, you know, well, why don't you teach your kids, you know, speak another language? Because if that's what employers are looking for, you know, I I, you know, I get the same. I have to remind them that their response is the same response that we used to get from Southerners complaining about migrants eating immigrants into their workforce areas. So, you know, just there's always, there's always more excuses and reasons why we can't than what there are solutions as to why we can't. And just as I say, you know, my frustration is is that I keep hearing the same excuses over and over and over again. And I keep saying to people, even if you say it loudly and you keep saying it repeatedly, it doesn't make it necessarily true. There's some, you know, the realities is that we don't start off with the same equal footing. So I can appreciate where this, you know, where this education, employment access, construction trade, whatever, there's some inequities that are just inherent in the way our community and society is created. But do you use that as a crutch and excuse? Or do you figure out a way around it? And then, you know, as my mother say, just work harder and with an expectation that that's just part of which it like, you know, the burden that you carry as being who you are. So that's about all I got on that. If anybody else has anything to add, I'd certainly, and I will try to reach back and ask for some reasons why people don't. Anybody else got on that particular subject before we move to a discussion of the practices for Brightwood Lincoln School project? And is that more or less of something that would probably be better served next month's meeting when the contractor has been invited to attend? Charlie, hold on a second.
So.
Go ahead, Charlie. You, I, if there's no objections, I will entertain. I saw his hand was up. Is there any objections from here, Charlie?
Okay, go ahead. Melvin, I I I'd like to, you know, address the first thing is for the city to give out contracts to a contractor, they need to get D CAM certified. And that's something that D CAM actually has on their website, you know, the steps to get certified for a contractor. And then Central Register is where all the jobs are, Theo knows more about that than I, but that's where all the jobs are advertised, it's the bulletin board for jobs and we need to get people working towards a D CAM certification and subscribing to Central Register. And what would really be nice is if there was a Springfield organization that could subscribe to Central Register and distribute it amongst their members. So that it's it's, I think, a hundred and fifty dollars a year for the subscription and you get to see all the jobs that are advertised, all the RFPs that go up and looking at those opportunities. But the local contractors, the minority owned businesses need to work towards getting a D CAM certification if they want to bid on public work. And they can, and the file sub bids are are some of the other trade work, they can do that on a smaller scale without being D CAM, not to file sub bid, but on some of the smaller work that doesn't meet that category, they can start bidding that work to general contractors. If they choose to.
Well, I I'm certainly, I've heard over the years, you know, when I started twelve years ago, I didn't know what D CAM certification was. I know that what it is now and it's certainly. I mean, it's just to be, to me, it just seems like it's just common knowledge that if you want to bid, this is the first obstacle that you have to overcome and it's you get certified. The Central Register, a hundred and fifty dollars a, you know, a year. Well, I mean, you know, that's that's my table bill for one month. So I mean, you know, I don't understand what that, you know, why that's so difficult. But, you know, one of these, so I believe the association itself to be a member is a hundred and twenty five dollars just to remember and I would assume that that would give them access to that register if it was there. I see Fiori's hand, so let me, let me, let me bow to Fiori. Please, Fiori. Fiori, did you want to make a comment? Are you muted, Fiori? We can't hear you. Your hand is up if you're wanting to say something. Okay. If Fiori can hear me, if he wants to say something, just drop right in. There's not that many people on the call so that if we, if he wants to just drop in, he doesn't need to be recognized. Anybody else have anything that needs to discuss?
Yeah, on this item, I think I might have been the one who put it on there. And it was just with that project wrapping up, I mean, you're talking about the best practices comment. Melvin, is that what you're on?
Yeah, I believe so. But I also believe that if I'm not mistaken, I believe that Hope sent it out as an attachment, the numbers on the agenda. So we have those for if anybody wants to discuss it or make comments about it, you you should have that document attached to the agenda that was sent out.
Okay, just, just, just so everybody knows that Maureen and I have worked out a system where basically I forward it to her and then she sends it agenda. So everybody who gets the agenda will get that attachment or whatever attachments, you know. Just because there was some mix up about who was getting it and who wasn't getting it and.
Alright, everybody gets the same thing.
Decided to streamline it that way.
So you have copies of that?
To the agenda. So if you got the agenda, you have to scroll down a page to get to that.
Well, Tim, I assume you're reading that now, Fiori.
I was just looking at it and and I I don't have time to look at that now. I'm I'm sorry that I didn't see it earlier, but but the spirit of my question is, is just, it's not just the numbers, it's which are apparently really good and at least the last, I heard they were good except for one category. It's more like, well, now that we've got one project, it's, I mean, we we, we're talking about this last month, weren't we, that it was potentially a representative project for doing things really well. And then somebody said, but we're, we really didn't hit all the numbers. I can't remember which category, but we didn't hit one number. So I just think we should probably, if it's next month or whatever, really just do a full review of that and see if we find out with the general contractor here, some things they did or, you know, did they really beat their numbers in every category? And if so, what were the things they did that encouraged that to happen, that caused that to happen? So that was my point is that we, you know, we waited for a while to have a good project. You know, it, there's been a lot of startup to this point, I guess, is my point. And and let's, let's capture what we learned from this project so we can go into the next project. You know, the the school that's going to be built in Mason Square. That was my point. Doesn't.
If, I, my suggestion would be that the members of the committee would, uh, look at the news numbers, come prepared when, for next month, when the contractor is there to ask specific questions related to numbers and what, you know, um, what they might have a concern with or might be willing to applaud them for being able to do. Once again, Fiore, your hand is still up. Do you have?
Yeah, I raised it. I raised it again. So I'm, um, on the point, I believe it was residency that we did not meet. So I want to be clear that, uh, you know, in, in, in through this whole REO, any out of state contractor that did not, um, was from out of state, because we cannot restrict as a state or a city contractors coming in, uh, through the commerce laws.
Fiore, we, we lost you a second. Can you repeat it? He, I believe Fiore stated at the beginning that he was in his car, so he may be lost for a second. Tim, your hand is still up. Did you have something you wanted to throw in there while we're waiting for Fiore to come back?
Yeah, um, I had it when I raised my hand. Just give me a second. Well, it was, you know, we need to get a hold, I know what it was. First on the general contractor, is it Hope, will you be the one who contacts them about coming the next month or something?
Yes, I'll, I'll reach out to Frank Amaro, uh, who's our contact with O'Connell and Sons. Fontaine Brothers, uh, is the GC on the new school that has not quite broken ground yet. Uh, I can reach out to them to see if they'll have, if they can have a representative available to join as well.
All right, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, yeah, you answered my next question, which was have we selected a new GC? And, um, Fontaine, I believe, was the company that, that built Pope Francis a couple of years ago.
That I don't know.
Not that that's a public, but I just, I, I think they, uh, I think they built that one, which had nothing to do with this. It's just uh, parenthetical really, but, um, okay, that's good. If you reach out to them, I think that sets us up for a good meeting. Along with the numbers, et cetera.
As long as we come prepared with questions that are specific to the numbers that we have before us and it gives you a whole month, we have to prepare those numbers or those questions. Uh, Fiore, you still there again?
Yeah, I was actually pulled over, but I, now I got really great service. No, my only point was that we got to remember and keep in the back of our mind that a general contractor, when making decisions, we need to let him know that we are for real with the numbers. He has more control over bringing in Massachusetts based companies versus out of state companies. And everyone that he does bring from out of state, we can almost guarantee we're not going to see residents on it. That's my only point. So, you know, that's one of the things we have to start highlighting. If we can use a mass based company, we can't say that as the city or town or state, but they can say that as the direct, uh, because they're subs of theirs or subs of subs.
Theo, you're the attorney there. Um, I mean, I, I hear what Fiore is saying, uh, and we can't legally, um, mandate them hiring it. Is that, that is correct, right? And I know that the REO, as he said, doesn't apply. But what type of pressure, what type of influence can we have, you know, in terms of, um, is that just, you know, it's got to be completely volunteer on their part. So essentially, am I correct, Theo?
You're correct. There's an interstate commerce clause argument to be made there when we try to restrict that kind of thing. Um, with that said, I see no issue with having a frank discussion with any out of state contractor at the inception of one of these projects to say, you know, these are expectations. What, what could we do? What, what can you offer us to, you know, get towards our goals here? And I don't think there's anything bad that can come from that. And I, I can't see any contractor not being receptive to that. And then also in addition to that, while the GC may not be able to, or may not be forced or coerced, I guess, to, to do that, I'm, I'm sure he's still going to have a pool of subcontractors that are going to be from the area.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we stand, uh, level legal ground.
Theo, could you explain at a very high level, the interstate commerce issue?
Yes. Hope last because it was like a semester.
Go back to that first year, uh.
I'll, I'll do my best counsel. Basically, if we, we are kind of messing around with interstate commerce, which is commerce between firms, companies, individuals in different states. When we halt or alter business practices between companies. So I can't tell a Connecticut company to do certain things that would restrict doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, for an example. Um, and they can't do that to us either. So the big thing is we can't, we can't say you need to hire, you need to basically fire your entire workforce, Connecticut GC and hire all Massachusetts, you know, residents.
And can I just jump in?
Okay.
Generally, um, I think it's best to kind of think of this as a states' rights versus federal, uh, government. Whereas the Interstate Commerce Clause was, um, enacted so that states weren't super protectionist about other states, uh, taking their business or, um, putting them at a disadvantage. So it's basically a concept that rests within our federal system of government. So that, you know, one state can't enact a law that, uh, un- unjustly punishes another state for doing business. Like using the example Theo gave of Massachusetts punishing a Connecticut company for doing business in Massachusetts because it therefore took that business away from a Massachusetts business.
So it's kind of like an anti-carpet bagger law?
Yeah, so it's sort of the federal government saying, listen, we all need to be on an even keel as it relates to state versus state.
Which is similar to what happened after the Civil War when the Southerners were decimated by, uh, Northerners coming in and taking over and acquiring the land and stuff, et cetera. At least that's my interpretation of, but might not be correct. Okay, Tim, did you have any other question or?
So basically, if we, an out of state contractor that was applying for one of our, one of our bids, and we said you need more Springfield people, they are, were prohibited from saying that or they're, they're prohibited. We, in other words, we can't expect them to fire all their Connecticut based people and hire all Springfield people.
The long and the short of it is an out of state contractor is not bound to the residency portion of our ordinance.
Okay. They can be bound to the other stuff, but not.
Yes.
All right, that's clear. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I mean, just on the face of it, Hope, maybe you can answer this. On the Brighton Wood project, the numbers that we got are the contractors that have fallen short, the ones primarily the ones from out of state?
I, I can't make that blanket conclusion. There are some. Um, for example, there is a company called Connecticut Acoustics, which I'm going to assume is based in Connecticut. At, uh, fell, they actually, they actually exceeded the residents, but fell short on, on women. So, um, there are, for example, Ettridge Equipment, which is certainly a local company, uh, they fell short of residents. They only had at their last, uh, you know, seven and a half percent. So I will say that generally speaking, Connecticut companies do not hire Springfield residents. That's just my knowledge from the past five, six years that I've been tracking this stuff. So when you have a company like, for example, WJ Mountford, which does a lot of business with the city, they're based, um, in Ellington, Connecticut, this is, uh, Hartford suburb. Generally, themselves do not have Springfield residents. But they do make, uh, an, a significant effort to use subcontractors in Massachusetts that have Springfield residents. So again, this goes back to the issue of we're now looking at these projects in the aggregate and not, uh, piece by piece on specific subcontractors. And, and I don't know if you've had a chance to glance at the numbers while we've been talking. Um, but again, the only, the only number that the Brightwood Lincoln School is short on are residents and it's actually inched up since previous month. They're at thirty point nine four percent, so we're up thirty-one percent of residents. The goal being thirty-five. So, uh, again, I, I understand the, uh, the position that the goal's thirty-five, so thirty-five is the magic number. But I don't think that we should, that the committee should lose sight of the fact that this project exceeded minorities, uh, almost ten percent. Exceeded females by, uh, more than, uh, and exceeded veterans by almost a full percentage and fell short with residents by less than five percent.
I, I. I definitely, I definitely agree, Hope, and I would hope that our questions for this GC would be ninety percent. What did you do to be able to hit these numbers? So we can take those and use those as best, best practices versus beating them up over why they were five percent short on residents?
Yeah.
I think that this contractor was very successful in meeting our REO, REO numbers. And based on the companies that we had seen coming in here before this, um, what did they do differently? What did you do to hit these numbers? What changes would, had you made in the work you do with other, other places that isn't necessarily Springfield? What, what did you do differently when you had this REO in mind? So I think that asking those types of questions are going to get us those best practices that we want, that we want to be able to share with other um, contractors, other, other, um, businesses that maybe aren't meeting the numbers. So we can kind of have a guide, um, for, you know, Springfield vendors when they get city work.
Yeah, those are good, those are good points, Lindsey.
And, and, and if I may, and I, I'm sorry if I'm a little out of order here, but, um, I would think that these kinds of numbers would be numbers that, um, you councillor Alan and you councillor Edwards would want to share with the rest of the city council, especially given that, uh, a majority of these numbers were in the middle of a pandemic. That this, that this project was able to go forward and employ, you know, thirty, thirty-one percent of its hours on Springfield residents. And, uh, you know, seven point two two percent women, almost thirty percent minorities. And almost six percent veterans. And those, as I've said in the past, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, the veterans' numbers, there are a lot of veterans that don't self identify as veterans for one reason or another. So that number could very well be higher. But I, 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 I would, from my position in the compliance department, I would hope that, uh, the city council could be made aware that, that this, especially given the pandemic environment, was a, a success story for the admitted REO.
That's a good point. That's good.
I agree. And we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting. And just when you take into consideration how much we talked about MGM and how well they did with their numbers, here we have a contractor doing city work. We should at the least, give them as much credit and as much tow as we did when we talked about what MGM did. It's an excellent story to tell and I think it really is a successful project in the eyes of the REO, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Here are none. Public comment, is, is there, uh, I believe this is the only one we have would ask, what would be Charlie? So.
My bad.
Charlie, this is the public comment. The public comment portion. So do you have any comments or anything like?
No, I do like the idea of bringing O'Connell in and they can maybe shed some light on to, as to who, who did the best. And, you know, like, I know from, I, I've deal with certain, you know, certain amount of the contractors. Uh, I know from my experience, NEIS, which did a lot of the finish work down there, called me two months ahead of time and said, we've got this project and these are the requirements. We want to meet with you. We want to go over it. We want to talk to you about, um, the best practices, the best way to, to, uh, meet the requirements. And, um, I think they had some of the better numbers of, of anybody. And I do agree with Hope that, um, veterans, uh, um, don't always identify that. That's difficult. As a matter of fact, I worked at MGM. I was the first carpenter hired. And, uh, they asked me about a veteran. I said, well, you know, I'm a veteran. And they said, well, you never told us that. Uh, so it is, uh, it is common for people not to identify as veterans until they're made aware of it. And I guess the only comments, um, I have.
Yes, many of us veterans do not recognize or acknowledge it for whatever reasons we choose. But to the point, Charlie, that you just made, um, we spend a lot of our time talking about how to browbeat the people who aren't doing the right thing. And to be honest with you, uh, you know, for those who have backgrounds in management, it's not the best use of, of, of time and effort for those who oversee. You generally get much more productivity from spending your energy on the group of people and the majority of those who are trying to do the right thing. Even, um, and, and this, it's a well documented, um, practice of that is we have to kind of fight our nature because our nature seems to be always to focus on the knucklehead when the majority of the group is trying to do the, doing best practices. But, um, you know, it was a technique that I was taught very early and, you know, many, many years ago when I was in retail management, it stopped focusing on that one individual or to support a couple of knuckleheads and spent it on, uh, helping the people who are trying to do the right thing. And you'll overall, and yet with better productivity. But I think that's also one of the reasons why when we come back, it shouldn't. And we have these contractors in, um, they, they'll probably come in defensive. Um, yes, you can, you know, there's nothing inappropriate about holding people accountable for shortcomings. But we also need to come with some character as well as to stick. And so knowledge in, in here and Charlie identifies somebody, uh, or company, you know, that's what we need to hear as well. Uh, it can't just always be the ones who are falling short and you know, let's, let's ensure that we have some balance in terms of, you know, the, the goal is to actually improve numbers. It's not just to browbeat. Though, and because, you know, sometimes knuckleheads just, you know, they, they don't care if they're being yelled at or not. Um, and I know personally, as a child growing up, the school system sending me to the principal's office didn't, didn't faze me at all. You know, they weren't going to be, like my mother's, who would I care about going to the principal's office? Just yelling. So, uh, is any other questions, comments, uh, that we need to address before we close this out? We're about forty-five minutes in.
I'd, I'd like to ask one more question about, um, and I'm, forgive me if I, if I'm missing something here. The, the businesses that are, um, all the subcontractors that are listed here, is, is there a way that we can identify which, uh, which of these subcontractors are women or minority owned? So, uh, in, in these reports? Because I believe that, uh, Norm, Nova would.
Well, I mean, first and foremost, be a women or minority owned business. Basically, the compet- Basically, the company would register with the state. So you can go to the state's website and see what, you know, in Handen County. Uh, or, you know, the four western counties, whatever, uh, businesses are registered as women or minority owned enterprises.
Okay. Okay, is, are there any other questions or comments before we adjourn? Um, okay, and as a reminder, everybody, that we are scheduled to meet on the third. Tuesday of May. Uh, I don't have my calendar right in front of me, but please, everybody just be conscious of that, two o'clock, third Tuesday. Uh, we wanna thank Maureen for getting the agenda and the notices and links out, and we always wanna give out a hearty. Uh, thank you and appreciation to the team at Focus Springfield. Um, we would not be able to to pull this off without their help. So we always wanna make sure there, that we're giving thanks to them. And to all of you, the members of the committee, and to Charlie as well, to Theo, Maureen, um, and Hope. Thank you very much, really appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.